Johnson, open for prayer.
Dear the Father, thank you for this day, uh, thank you for each and everyone here, or just thank you for all your blessings and just we pray that you just lead God and direct us and go through this maybe and uh, go through this part of it. And we say she's healed from the same.
All right. Public hearing for the mobile home ordinance and four law home ordinance.
Anyone here about the uh, for the hearing on the mobile home ordinance or four law ordinance? Hearing here, um, so we previously uh, set this for a public hearing and made the proposal uh, that y'all add a definition to both ordinances that uh, addresses the subdivision of land uh, which we've seen happening in county in an effort to, in my opinion, circumvent the mobile home part provisions of the ordinance. And so uh, being official public comment, if y'all are satisfied with those amendments to the ordinance and ultimate motion to make those amendments and put them in effect.
We made a motion.
Second. Steve with the motion. Randy with the second. So move.
Did you get her?
All right, move on to the consent agenda. Approved plain docked payments from December of twenty twenty-three. Approved statement of expenditures for tax office from December twenty-three. Approved statement of expenditures for sheriff's department in jail from December twenty-three. Approved mill log for the jail in December of twenty twenty-three. Approved board minutes from December of twenty twenty-three. Approved road department work schedule for January of twenty twenty-three. Medical examiner fees, statement fees. Approved solid waste registry and approved ninety-day solid waste delinquency.
I made a motion.
Second. Chad with the motion, Randy with the second. All right. Board supervisors. Appointments of the following for a four-year term. County Administrator T. Johnson. Board Attorney Chandler Rogers. Control of Brickley Robertson. Larry Britt, Elliot Britt for engineering. BMA Director Kurt Clayton. Road Manager Scotty Whittington. Purchase Clerk Tammy Flowers. Brickley Robertson Assistant Purchase Clerk. Lisa Latham Inventory Clerk Kurt Clayton Receiving Clerk. Assistant Receiving Clerk fourteen of those. Sheriff's Department is Taylor Harrison. Tiffany Irving, Frida Rexstraw. Courthouse is Cynthia Willbanks. Extension Office of Jane Brooks. Building and Grounds at David Gaines. Road Department Sammy Carroll, Joe Reed, Ricky Kaiser. John Rexstraw, Jeff Akins, Jonathan Galacut, Alan Pannell, who the up church. arson investigator to be appointed. Do that.
We consider.
Consider.
Would you go with Eric?
So we got Eric Flowers. Arson investigator. That's what he asked. Volunteer Fire Coordinator Butch Todd. D nine one one Dressing Officer Mobile Home, Handing Home Officer and Animal Control Officer Kurt Clayton. Veteran Service Officer Mike Bennett. Justice Court Clerk Mayor Captain Hake.
And I've got uh, minutes and uh, order and contract.
Need a motion.
Come in, Logan.
Motion by Randy Owen. Steve working the second. Cemetery Clerk. Approval of semi-annual payments for services clerk of board. Present to Mississippi Cove twenty-five dash seven dash nine. We'll do all these together.
I don't like the motion because I don't like that.
She's talking with the motion. Randy with the second.
If I got here, I got to. I might get here again.
Discuss bids received for county deposit coin.
I have proof of locations that we plan to receive bids in. We have received bids from B and A Bank, Paydon's Bank, Emory's.
I don't hate it because my stove. Yeah, so my stove.
He watches a lot of them, huh? Sheriff, take his permit. Huh? They'll crop out neither. You're lowering. I mean, there's no question. You pay somebody to clean up there.
Uh, yeah.
So B and A Bank uh, on their bid proposal, they're agreeing to prepare monthly statements. Uh, they agree to provide these accounts with those service charges or credit for deposits, credit, check, pay, incoming, outgoing, buy, transfer, or return deposits. In addition, B and A agrees to provide the following services at no charge, related deposit capture, internet online banking statements, bank account field pay, stop payments, life depository services, research, statement, reproduction, and other minimum safety services. It agrees to provide ledger credit the same day as deposits. Uh, agrees to pay interest on the average daily balance of any funds deposited to each checking account uh, at the following rate, a variable rate of interest equal to a hundred fifteen basis points, one point one five percent below the federal reserve bank discount rate. Uh, to adjust on the first day of each month for a two-year period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and continue through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, or a four-year period through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, based upon whatever uh, the board chooses. Uh, the current federal reserve discount rate is five point five percent, therefore the current rate on these deposits at this time will be four point three five percent. So that's B and A. Offer Union, Renesat will offer Union County interest-bearing public fund deposits with choice of rate options, two or four calendar years beginning January two thousand twenty-four. The two-year fixed rate would be three point three percent and a floating rate of three point seven five percent. A four-year fixed rate would be two point five percent with a floating rate of three point two five percent. Um, no maintenance fees, buy, rent, and run it. Online banking, business check express. They provide one check capture device at no charge. Safe deposit box. Of course, all both banks are providing the uh, FDR insurance. And Paydon's Bank. A variable rate uh, equal to Fed Funds Target minus a hundred basis points with a four point zero five percent for two years. So the variable rate currently equals three point five percent. The rate option includes a fixed monthly fee of five hundred dollars for the agreed-upon bid period, excluding merchant service fees. A variable, and also offering a variable rate equal to Fed Funds Target minus one hundred and ten basis points with a four point zero five for two years. That variable rate would be uh, four point four percent and they waive all fees uh, that are agreed upon during that time period. They offer a fixed rate of three point zero five percent for two years. Uh, there would be a fixed monthly fee of five hundred dollars. Uh, or they offer a fixed rate of two point nine five percent for two years and they waive uh, the monthly fee. And then they also are offering a variable rate. Fed Funds Target minus one hundred basis points. Uh, so this is a four point five percent. Uh, there's a fixed monthly fee of five hundred dollars. This is if we choose when it's our primary depository financial institution. They offer a Fed Funds Target rate uh, minus one hundred and ten basis points, which would be four point four percent if they waived that five hundred dollar fee, or a fixed rate for two point six five percent for years. That has a five hundred dollar monthly fee, or you can do the fixed rate of two point five five percent for four years and they waive that fee. Carrie, have you looked at all these?
What?
Have you looked? Probably need to, probably need to take them under advisement and look at all these because there's a lot of different kinds of words to um, make sure that.
I'm not gonna move.
She have a motion. Randy with the second, take it under advisement. Approval of allocating second quarter budget tax assessed collector sheriff's department in jail. Tax collector two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four. Uh, sheriff's department is seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. See, that was three hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chad.
Can't operate with no money.
Circuit clerk advertised circuit clerk compensation, five thousand year duties regarding collection and other duties in Mississippi Cove twenty-three dash fifteen dash two point five.
I don't know. I thought we discussed first year that. Oh, she's here. Oh, I didn't know she was here.
Didn't you say the first year they worked for?
For free, I thought.
Yeah, that's what you told me.
Did you?
Yes, Mike. I'm still going to.
I'll can get bro.
Motion by Randy. Second, let's see. Oh, we got him. Authorized county registrar salary could be paid, shall not exceed nineteen thousand three hundred and forty a year, but shall not be less than nine thousand six hundred and sixty a year. Present to Mississippi Cove twenty-three dash fifteen dash two, two second.
Motion. Second. And right now Sam will play in that. That's in the book.
I already think it. Steve with the motion, Chad with the second. All right, road department. Discuss Kim Pro Professional Service Agreement, twenty twenty-four, we control services at county roads.
It's the great W D. Every type of one is rated where I said it.
Yep.
Motion go first.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second, let's see.
I haven't seen what they will be giving that plate.
What road it is.
Yeah, wait it out.
Move on. Approval of four-year road planning inspections.
I'm waiting for you.
Second. Motion by Chad. Second by Randy. All in power.
And I need each of you to stand, half on your road, on your district. Yeah, so don't run off.
All right, discuss purchasing a pickup on state contract.
This is truck on what vehicle on state bid.
Yep. You got a copy.
That's how you post it down.
Please, sir, yes, so we have.
You can give them. Then we'll probably get them.
So we had it from Landers.
Mm-hmm.
Then we tell you. You had it.
That's mine.
That's it. Forty-five thousand three point eight. And the second one is from.
Uh-uh.
I just want to say.
This one you want me?
Well, yeah, we're good. That one right there, she's got the picture of.
Three, four, ton. Long wheelbase.
No, it's all crew cab.
Okay. Ready.
Crew cab. Three, four, ton, crew cab. One highlighted there.
Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Let's say that. Everybody. Motion. All right, Jay. Discuss quotes, purchase of a twenty-five five, we're gonna wait on it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
What are you just gonna try to get for now?
Dave and I are gonna look for Friday for a bit and lay back.
Discuss quotes for.
We have first one from G M O Supply. For twelve thousand one eighty-eight point fifty-one, twelve thousand one eight eight point five zero. In progress, it's twelve thousand nine fifty-five fifty, twelve thousand nine five five point five oh. Looking at them, I'm not sure that they're the same. It's the same before about twelve thousand five fifty. Yes, they're the same. It has a pair of lifting, instead of lifting levels.
Yeah.
Everything matches up. Right.
That's where you get the.
That's one on ninety-four. I see that phone right there. Right off the thing thing.
From ninety-four.
County road ninety-four. Y'all are on this to admit it there.
So cut the low bid.
What year is G M O?
Yeah, make a move, make a low bid.
All right, Randy with the motion.
Second.
Steve with the second. All those. Approval of manual chip, A P A, two thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and eight cents. Enforce correction.
He was just inadvertently omitted from the checks on the claim, so we need it. If they look at them, it's over there.
With a motion.
Motion between.
Thank you.
Second, bye.
Are you being serious? Are you gonna do it?
Yeah. I'll second.
Thanks, dude.
That'll prove.
A P A is free.
I do, I'm real. Pulling up real good. They're gonna pay you.
Never write that.
It's the same.
Let me see, sheriff's department, discuss quotes for a paying, a purchase of a new water for the jail. What you been quoting?
Well, we only got one. Uh, I think it came in kind of late and Mr. Taylor was not able to to talk to any more companies, but it's, it's out. It's been out and I don't know if there's something to do without.
I'm sort of an emergency.
Uh, looking at emergency deal or not, but we got a quote to fix one we got for nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars to fix it. And a quote, um, uh, I got some. That's the quote to fix.
Yep.
Yeah, it was well, eight thousand eight hundred, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars to fix it. Eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty, that's kind of what it needed. Fifty-five to sixty-five pounds, whatever. And washing machine. Professionally.
What we got now? What we got now?
Well, I think according to Taylor, this one is a little bigger than the one we got. It's just supposed to be a little bigger than the one we got.
You said that.
So now, that's all we got.
I don't let it down.
Three weeks or, I don't know, three weeks or so.
How is that?
I guess it's probably ninety-eight dollars in jail. As far as I know, I don't think it was replaced.
We'll prove this and make sure that we're getting one bigger than what we got.
For sure.
Not gonna do that. Well, we, we don't wanna think it's bigger than what we got.
I mean, this commercial, all this is commercial.
It's continued.
Well, it's over by having to get two clocks, this is an emergency or something.
We'll get.
And uh, it's over, so you know, it's over. Unless it's an emergency, get up to the top of the line or an emergency.
They're using the one that's in the trusted house, which is like we use at our house. It, it, it.
You feel like it's an emergency?
If you make clothes, watch it is.
Was big for me, I guess.
Yeah. We have my so getting washing right, it's probably. Now, whatever. Sixty-five, sixty-five pound. So whatever that means.
We get sure what's good. Eight thousand. That's all we gotta do.
To get a uniform.
Just make sure that it's.
At least is big or bigger than what we got.
You looking, you looking out here. I mean.
We'll declare the emergency to make sure it's as big or bigger than what we have.
And if that would do what we want to do. But declare an emergency party.
You see what I'm actually being after that?
Randy make a motion, I say. All right, Randy with the motion.
Whoever you got.
Let you know what. I don't want to get a little bit.
Motion is finished. All right, I like you. Approval of long-dated pay rates for Ryan Fraser effective January the sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm not gonna let you.
Second.
Motion by Steve. Second, Chad.
All these other ones are just moving around.
They do.
Can you give you a break with all of them?
Only, only one in here that sticks out is Ashley Jenny. She's actually leaving. Uh, she's got accepted into the House of Control. And so she reports January the twenty-first to, to the House of Control. So I'm trying to jinx her, but uh, I would like to leave her on here in case she don't like it. She'd be, she, she might want to come back home. So if, if she does, I'll always be on. If she don't, then she won't be here anymore.
All right, approval of important change effective January the second, twenty-four, follow. Matthew Pannell from sergeant to lieutenant, Eric Flowers from sergeant to lieutenant, Alex Bryant from sergeant to lieutenant, Ashley James from sergeant to lieutenant, Gunnar Higgins from corporal to sergeant, Taylor Merritt from corporal to sergeant, Dallas Lundkin from corporal to sergeant, Jonathan Martin from corporal to sergeant. Need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Randy, second, let's see. I'll have Chad. All right, motion finished. All right, motion begins.
Yeah, see, bought from you.
And I guarantee you find that best part of the.
Well, you've got, I mean, a brand.
My son.
You got a brand. Let's bring it in, dude.
Bring it. Get how you do it.
Need a motion, recess, what year did you get in?